February 1st, meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda is approval of minutes of January 25th, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I have a change, and it's in the second paragraph, and it is a motion, and we always bold and underline our motion, and I've kind of reworded it to fit the pattern that we have in the past, so it should say, "It was moved by Lynda Murray, second by Luke Feidenberg, to approve and sign the 2017 warrant as submitted. Members voted, and being none opposed, the motion passed." So I'd like it in that format and underlined.
Okay.
And I'll give you my copy of it.
So, are we, you're talking about February 1st?
No.
January 25th.
Okay, please only do that.
Okay, I'll get it to him when he comes back.
Any other changes or comments? Thought I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move second.
Motion second on the floor to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next to the minutes for February 1st, 2017.
I don't have any changes. Yeah, I know. She did an excellent job.
It's not public?
No, the February 1st are the public meetings. Public minutes.
Public minutes.
The first ones we did, Pete, were a...
Right, well, I don't have any other minutes in there, I don't think, so maybe there isn't. It's non-public.
There were the packets. There were two sets of...
Oh, there were all...
Yes, they were all set.
So I'd entertain a motion on the February 1st minutes.
I'll move second.
Motion second on the floor, any discussion?
Back in the...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I was staying. I wasn't here.
David Stain. Okay, if the board would like, I'd like to take one thing out of order a little bit. We have a grant that was approved that, and I think I saw Kathy come in. There she is. Would you like to speak to this grant at all, Kathy?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, my name is Kathy Barnard. I'm the chairman of the Mill Foil Control Committee, and we've received a grant which we've received each year in past years from New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services to offset the cost of the divers who come in and do hand-pulling of mill foil in Back Bay area. The total cost of the project was projected to be $12,250, and the grant from the state is worth $3,675. And it's my understanding that you folks need to accept this grant and then authorize the acting town manager to execute the documents that are necessary in order to meet the terms of the contract with the state. I might just add that we're trying to do as much hand-pulling with certified divers as possible. That seems to have been relatively successful last year, and we're hoping that it will be again this year, and so we're not planning on doing any chemical treatment in the Back Bay area.
Okay. Well, thank you for the work on the grant also. I did misspeak. This wasn't taken out of order. This was kind of brought to us last minute, so it wasn't in the packet, so it's kind of an add-on onto our agenda tonight, so... I would entertain a mo... Oh, actually, are there any questions from the board first? I'd entertain a motion on this.
I move that we accept the state grant for the mill foil.
I think we need to add the amount of $3,675 and to ask the acting town manager to execute the documents. Is that added to yours, Dave?
Aye, yes.
Is that okay to add that to your motion?
Sure.
Second on that?
I'll second it, then.
Motion second on the floor, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have a series of public hearings tonight. First one being Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department and Kate Band to hold band concerts on June 28th, July 4th, 5th, 12th, 19th, 26th, and August 2nd, 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th of 2017, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. at the Wolfboro Community Bandstand.
Good evening. I'm Judy Pascal, and I represent the Kate Park Band. We're Wolfboro's community band, and we are all volunteers, and we consist of all ages. We meet on Wednesday evenings in the park to provide family entertaining concerts. These are free concerts, and this will be our 26th season.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board first? I'll open up the public hearing to the, anybody in the audience who would have any questions. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members?
I'll make the motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department and Cake Park Band to hold band concerts on June 28th, July 4th, 5th, 12th, 19th, 26th, August 2nd, 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th, 2017, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. at the Wolfboro Community Bandstand.
I'll second that.
Motion a second on the floor, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all set. Next on the agenda is the Friends of Wolfboro Community Bandstand to hold outdoor concerts on July 8th, 15th, 22nd, 29th, August 5th, 12th, 19th, 26th, and September 2nd, 2017, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at Kate Park and the Wolfboro Community Bandstand.
Yes. I'm a member of the Board of Directors for the Friends of the Wolfboro Community Bandstand, and we provide a summer concert series of professional, family-oriented concerts. They're free performances Saturday nights in July and August, and this will be our 23rd season.
Okay. I'll open up the public hearing to anybody in the audience that has any questions or comments. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members?
The only thing I would just like to note for you, and I don't see that there'll be any problem, on that same day, the New England Chapter of Antique and Classic Boat Show will be going on. It should be ending at 2:00, so I just thought I'd like to know that that is also scheduled for that day, and I think you also need to... Nope, it's okay. Fine.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion on this one.
Make the motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Friends of the Wolfboro Community Bandstand to hold outdoor concerts on July 8th, 15th, 22nd, 29th, August 5th, 12th, 19th, 26th, and September 2nd, 2017, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at Cake Park and the Wolfboro Community Bandstand.
I'll second that.
Motion a second on the floor, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next public hearing is the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation to hold a fundraising walk on May 20th, 2017, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., starting and ending at Foss Field.
Mr. Chair, just before the meeting, I received a telephone call from Mrs. Sarah Foin saying that due to the weather, she wasn't going to be able to attend tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, she has showed up in the past, and it seems to be pretty well the same event that we've seen, and so I don't have any problem of us granting it tonight if the other board members are okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I'll just kind of sort of public-nose a little bit. It's a kind of a walk that goes down through the downtown area. Foss Field goes out the Cotton Valley Railroad path, comes back in on Center Street into town, and then back down on... By the hardware store, back into the Foss Field area. Depot Street, there it is, so... A little bit of public hearing, anybody have any questions? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit for Cystic Fibrosis Foundation to hold fundraising walk on May 20th, 2017, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., starting and ending at Foss Field.
Second.
Motion a second on the floor, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next public hearing is for the Hospital and Community Aid Association, Inc., to hold a street fair on August 4th and 5th, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Tents erected on July 28th and removed on August 7th at Monument Field.
Yes, I'm Sarah Silk. I'm president of the Hospital and Community Aid, and I'm here this evening for Jane Loss and her husband Bob, and this will be the 80th Hospital and Community Aid Fair. I'm sure everybody here has probably been at least once or two, twice, or maybe 20 or 30 years, and as always, it's run by volunteers, and the proceeds go for equipment for patient care and other nonprofit needs within the community, and there's always something there, some priceless items, some wonderfully interesting books and things we probably don't even know what they are, but I'm sure you'll find interesting, and they'll probably be great to amuse your kids. The, I would just like to let you know that the items that were purchased from last year's fair for the EMS is upgrading the EMS defibrillators. For the medical surgical unit, it was Philips Vital Sign Machines. We purchased three of those units to replace outdated and aging equipment for cardiac rehab. It was the SciFit Pro 2 Total Body exerciser, which has, the primary thing that that does is to do arm exercises and whatnot down at rehab. We also got exercise machines for upper body, which are wheelchair adaptable for rehab, which is really important that they have the wheelchair adaptability. I don't imagine you guys have any questions. There is an insurance form. We get the new one, we will, as always, send that to you, and the traffic control is on file.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members?
The only thing that's written on here, and you know that, but a tent permit is required?
Yes.
Thank you.
We do know that.
Yeah, I figured you did, but...
Yeah, I think there were 15 pages in the application with a good deal of that going to Terry about the tents.
I would entertain a motion on this one.
I'll move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Hospital and Community Aid Association, Inc., to hold the street fair on August 4th and 5th, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Tents are to be erected on July 28th and removed on August 7th at Monument Field.
Second.
Motion a second on the floor, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll see you there.
Next on the agenda for public hearing is the Wolfboro Friends of Music to hold multiple performers' concert on September 9th, 2017, from 2:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. at Kate Park.
Hi, I'm John Sandine, past president of the Wolfboro Friends of Music, representing Carl Crossley, who filed the application for a concert on September 9th at Kate Park from 2:30 to 10:30. And this is our first venture into this arena, to provide a free outdoor concert with several performers, with a lead band or lead group in the evening, and some performances during the afternoon as well, so that it would be a longer program than just one performance. And it would be held at Kate Park, and so we're asking for your support in doing this. We've received a generous grant from the Kate Park Memorial Events Committee to support the effort, and we will put in some additional funds of our, from our Friends of Music fund effort and pay for the whole concert. The other thing is that it's on September the 9th, so it will be typically, people will think of this concert as being another one at the bandstand, and so it will help us to draw a crowd on that day as well.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members?
I think this is a great idea. It'll be nice to extend the concert time into the fall more, so it's great that they're doing it. Also, I think they need a new insurance policy. It'll be outdated by the time, yeah, it's outdated 5/6/2017. Just need to get us an updated one when your new policy comes in.
What is it, Dave, what you're pointing out, it's definitely should be updated?
It's on the back. It's the insurance policy. It says it expires on 5/6/2017, and your concert is on 9... 9?
Yeah.
9/9. So you'll get it, they just need to, when you get the, your insurance, new insurance, that that form, you get us a new one.
Gotcha, okay, I see.
Okay.
Yes, I see the point. Thank you.
I'd entertain a motion on this one.
Make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Wolfboro Friends of Music to hold a multiple performers' concert on September 9th, 2017, from 2:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. at Kate Park.
I'll second that.
Motion a second on the floor, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next public hearing will be Brewster Academy to hold On the Green One Arts and Crafts Festival on July 7th through the 9th, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Memorial Field.
Good evening, I'm Christine Brown. I work at Brewster Academy. This is our annual Arts and Crafts Festival with arts and crafts and some snack foods. Proceeds go to day student scholarships.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing to the audience. If anybody has any questions or comments, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members?
Also says on this form that all tents need to meet the New Hampshire Fire Code, and I'm sure you know that from...
Same tents every year.
Yes, same comment.
Let's see, the insurance policy, they've already highlighted the part there that the new one will be coming to us, so...
Yeah, I saw that too, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make the motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to Brewster Academy to hold On the Green One Arts and Crafts Festival on July 7th through 9th, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Memorial Field.
Second.
Motion a second on the floor, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next one is Brewster Academy to hold On the Greens Two Arts and Crafts Festival on August 11th through the 13th, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And on Sunday, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Memorial Field.
Same thing, but it's number two, and it's in August.
Different day. Any questions from, oh, I'll open up the public hearing again. Close the public hearing again. Board members?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to Brewster Academy to hold On the Green Two Arts and Crafts Festival on August 11th, 13th, 20017, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Memorial Field.
Second.
Motion a second on the floor, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next year.
Next hearing on the agenda is the All Saints Episcopal Church to hold a summer fair on July 15th, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 258 South Main Street.
Hi, Brad. I'm Phil Wassmith, a member of All Saints Church and past fair chair coordinator, and I'd like to introduce Jay Wyman, who will be a co-chair this year along with Joanne Crowe, and he can answer any questions and talk a little bit about our 57th All Saints Summer Fair.
Good evening, I'm James Wyman, co-chair of the Summer Fair for All Saints. This is for Saturday, temporary outdoor permit is requested for Saturday, July 15th. The hours are from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. We've helped to generate funds for the church and our ministries. It's a community event, and it's been very well-received by people that have been in attendance. We've got an insurance form that we filed, but we'll have a new one that'll be issued after April 1st. We've ordered and purchased the tents, and when we get the certificate of fire retardant certification on the tents, we'll file that with the town, and it's our hopes that you'll be in favor of this event.
Okay. Open up a public hearing to anybody that has any questions or comments. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members, any questions, comments?
It says on here that a parking agreement with Huggins Hospital should be required. You have agreement for people to park at the Huggins Hospital parking lot?
That's on our agenda, to contact the hospital and firm that up, yes. It's been a symbiotic relationship with the hospital.
And I would entertain a motion on this one.
I'll move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the All Saints Episcopal Church to hold a summer fair on July 15th, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 258 South Main Street. Second.
Motion a second on the floor, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Say, Jay, thank you. And our last public hearing tonight will be the Carpenter School to hold a Stacy Burns Memorial Scholarship 5K Run Walk on May 13th, 2017, from 8:30 a.m. to noon, starting and ending at Carpenter School.
Hey there. I'm Sonia Lepar.
Hi, I'm Jackie Gresso.
And it's our annual Run Walk for Stacy Burns Scholarship Fund, May 13th. We're gonna start at 8:30.
To noon.
To noon, and it's, I think it's our sixth year, our sixth year, so we just ask... It's a 5K, it starts at Carpenter, it goes up to Crescent Lake School and back, and all the proceeds go to a scholarship fund for any graduating senior going into the nursing program. So it stays in the community, and it keeps Stacy Burns alive a little in our community.
Very nice. I'll open up the public hearing to anybody that has any questions or comments. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members? I would entertain a motion on this.
I move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Carpenter School to hold the Stacy Burns Memorial Scholarship 5K Run Walk on May 13th, 2017, from 8:30 a.m. to noon, starting and ending at Carpenter School. Thank you.
Motion a second on the floor, any discussion?
We need the certificate of insurance, right?
That, that should be coming to you. We've already submitted that, and Avery said they'd be sending it directly to the town.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All set.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the bulk vote, and we had a handout come to us tonight that I think we should probably have a motion to put it in, because it's a replacement of a error that was made on a page in our bulk vote. It was a for abatement refund, number 42, Part 2, the tax year 2015.
I move that we replace that abatement with the one given to us this evening.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion second on the floor, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we can have a motion on the bulk vote itself.
I move that we accept the bulk vote with the two items changed.
Second.
Motion a second on the floor, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Next up is a discussion on the Wolfboro Wastewater Treatment Facility win for New Hampshire Plant of the Year.
Hello, Dave Ford, Public Works Director, and I'm very happy here tonight to kind of celebrate an award that the town has received and to acknowledge the hard-working gentlemen who work for us through Woodward and Curran. I'd like to read the press release for us and then kind of talk a little bit about the guys, and then hopefully we can take a nice picture that hopefully we might be able to get into the paper to get some good public relations. The town of Wolfboro was presented with the Plant of the Year Award from the New Hampshire Water Pollution Control Association during the organization's annual meeting on December 9th, 2016. The Plant of the Year Award is also referred to as the PADI Awards. Those wastewater guys have a lot of sense of humor, and is awarded to the New Hampshire Wastewater Plant to recognize outstanding excellence in following both U.S. EPA and New Hampshire DES requirements based on the following criteria. Compliance, obviously, we have a permit, and we always have to be compliant, we have monthly reports. Safety, one of the number-one things is always, we want to be safe. Employee education and development, where our guys go to regular training, and Woodward and Curran has a very good program that they continue to have training. Public outreach, our guys do, annually do tours with Brewster Academy and the high school, and anyone who's willing to go and want to take a tour and understand where the wastewater goes when you flush your toilet. They also have a professional association participation, which, they're involved in different associations, and most important, they have a site inspection, so the state has a committee that comes up and does a detailed inspection, and they were very impressed with our facility. What I would say also is that the facility has been supported by the town, so this is not just about these guys at Woodward and Curran, it's really about the town, because the town has supported the board of selectmen and the voters, so this is something that we should all celebrate, and again, the trophy, which has been, you see it, a lot of big communities are on that, and communities who have spent multi-millions of dollars, and while we have spent many millions of dollars on our sewer system, the treatment plant, we really have not, and as you recall, in 2005, the recommendation was to replace the facility with a whole new facility. But we went Yankee way. We did a few improvements here and there, we spent $100,000, $200,000, then we had a grant from the state, and we spent, so maybe a million dollars over a 10-year period. But what we have done is quite unique, and what I've also attached to the press release was the case studies that EPA did, so we were selected in a national, now this is still called draft, it will be issued, and in it, it talks about Wolfboro and how we have done the cyclic iteration to get our wastewater to be one of the cleanest in the state. Our nutrient levels, this is, this system was designed to remove BOD, suspended solids, which are all secondary treatment plants, but we technically, with the help of our operators, the... But we technically, with the help of our operators, and engineers, and the upgrades, we have this new system, which is low cost, but we're able to get our nutrients, the total nitrogen, down to levels of four milligrams per liter, and our total phosphorus below one milligram per liter, on a constant base for a whole year. So it's quite remarkable, and because of that, we were able to not have to spend money on process. Now, with that being said, the facility is still 40 years old, and it still needs a lot of work, which is why we're continuing on our capital reserve account and doing projects, and our asset management plan, so that we can plan for the future. And the result, a lot of this work, I would like to bring up now my three operators. The plant manager is Russ Howe. Russ Howe's been working there for 20 years, dedicated employee who oversees the overall plant, and is responsible for managing the RAB site also. John Craig, who's been here for over 33 years, he started with the town, and even before the wastewater, he had worked in other departments. And when I started with the Wolfboro originally in 1992, John showed me how to run the plant. And I was an engineer, but I had all the textbook, but John had the practical knowledge. And we did the lab work together, and we did all the sampling. And John has been a real trooper, and hanging in there, and still plugging away. And a rookie, well, not rookie, but Steve Mancini, who's only been here 13 years, Steve's another excellent operator. This year, he actually passed his grade four, the very few guys who are grade fours, so he's taken initiative in the training. So we have a grade four, a grade three operator that shows again their commitment to excellence. And I would say, I invite anyone from the public who would like to see the facility, because it is really amazing. A wastewater facility, a lot of times, it's not a place you want to show off. We're very proud of our facility, even though it's 40 years old, and it's done excellent. And again, I just want to congratulate them and the town for supporting us. And what I'd like to do now is bring up the trophy, show, and have maybe a picture, is there a camera? Are you taking a picture?
I don't have a camera.
Okay.
Tom, you can use mine. I can, David, I can do it.
I'll be happy to shoot the photos if you want to get in. I've got a camera. What do you want to do there? I think maybe the camera, save people there if you get a friend you guys on the side. Okay, so that. Sure.
Russ, you gotta make sure you can see you. No. You got one behind. Dave, okay, there you go.
I'd just like to add one thing into this too, Dave. First of all, congratulations to you guys. That's tremendous accomplishment, and you know, and award and everything, that's great. And part of this, and this acknowledgement, I don't know if you were gonna read into these or not, Dave, but they, EPA had noted 12 different facilities in the United States. City of Bozeman, Montana, City of Chinook, Montana, Flagstaff, Arizona, Leighton, Florida, Montrose, Colorado, Tampa, Florida, Titusville, Florida, Florida Keys Aqueduct Authority, Hampton Township, Pennsylvania, Town of Crewe, Virginia, Town of Wolfboro, New Hampshire, and Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority in California. So I guess it's pretty amazing to have our town here to be. Yeah. So I think that's.
Excellent job. The budget committee went out to the plant two years ago, a year ago, and they were extremely impressed with the building and the.
I'd like to move that the board of selectmen congratulate the Public Works Department of Wolfboro Wastewater Treatment Facility for winning the New Hampshire Plant of the Year Award.
I think I'd definitely second that. All those in favor of that, I would assume?
Aye.
Aye. That's awesome. Thank you, Dave.
Great, well, thank you very much. Again, it's, you know, Public Works is always there for you. A lot of times, you don't like it, and you know, in the storms, people get frustrated because, you know, we have to keep the roads open, and when I, myself, I've got a bad back now from having to plow out my driveway like everyone else, and the plow driver goes through, and if they accidentally hit your mailbox, or if the snow hits and knocks it off, you get frustrated. But these gentlemen here, and my highway workers, my water sewer crew, my water plant, they all take very good pride. They're here for you. They're there, your department, and if you get a chance to say thank you, we would appreciate that. We appreciate you taking the time to listen tonight, and again, we'll continue to serve the town well.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, we can go on to the Capitol Projects Report?
Yep, that's a text on the agenda here.
Pete and I, at the end of the year, we like to kind of make sure our numbers, because some of these projects are going year to year, so we want to do that update. And some of these projects have not moved much since the last time, so I won't dwell on them unless you have a question. And let's just start up the waterline project in the downtown street, excuse me, waterline, we'll start with that one. That one's going to be used, the money when the Center Street project goes, and that's going to be going out to bid this week, but I hope that'll be starting soon. The Route 28 study has got to get done this year, because it's in, the budget for 2018, the DOT is supposed to start the 10-year process on that project, and that is a project from Pickering Corner out to the Wolfboro-Toftonboro Town Line, South Main Street, and it's a major project, and we want to get this all squared away, so we have our input up front, and we're supportive of the project, and then hopefully they'll start the preliminary engineering, it goes for a couple of years, it's not scheduled for construction to 2023.
Dave, are you gonna do the Pickering Corner, take the, you had a committee, are you gonna take them around to look at the possibilities?
We've got to get the committee back together, and make sure it's still interesting. And one of the issues was the roundabouts, and obviously, there's quite a bit of discussion that needs to be held on that, and we'd like to go visit areas where they are that are similar to this, if that's something that we would recommend versus a no-build option, or a traffic light with different types of options in the traffic lights. We have three basic solutions, and that is one, that's been a popular one, I have a lot of comments, pro and con about it, but I think this process will be good, and we need to pull the committee back together, and hopefully we'll do that in spring, and get those answers to them. So that'll be wrapped up this year.
Just, I think I told you before, Dave, for some reason, that whole committee doesn't come back together, if there's an opening or something like that, I'd be happy to, you know, fill in too, just to.
Oh yeah, I think that's gonna be important, too, we need to, because it's been a few years, because we pushed it to get the Center Street project done, and then it kind of fell on hold because of a lot of things. So I will make an announcement on that, and if we need some additional people, that we'd definitely like to have volunteers. And actually, these meetings can be attended by anyone if you have interest, you don't have to be on the committee, but we will take your input. There's no, we'll have posted meetings and make them open to the public. The design of Pine Street, Crescent Lake Avenue, this is a project that we have appropriate money for the design, the design has been completed, and it's just waiting. And again, with Center Street, we didn't want to have two projects at the same time going on, so this unfortunately has been pushed back. But hopefully, we will be with the Center Street project moving forward, we can get this one moving forward in 2018 or 2019.
Do you see this going before anything up at Pickering Corner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, this definitely will occur, again, depending on the town going forward with it, but I see within the next couple of years, the bigger project will be, just the engineering will start, and it'll take three, four years of engineering before, that's a major, major project.
Okay.
The downtown streets, Phase 3 upgrade, this money has been slotted to do drainage in the back parking lot of Harvest Market, that's a town-owned property. And the ditch that takes all the Center Street drainage goes into a ditch that runs along the backside of Foss Field. We have our wetland permits, and we've been holding off on this, trying to find the right time, but we do plan on doing it this early spring, if the timing is right, in which we will have to take all the fences down, and build a haul road in, and muck out all the junk that's accumulated there over years. That's kind of important, because it is kind of, some of the stuff is not good, we'll pull that out, dry it out, and properly dispose of it. We'll also open up the hydraulic capacity, so it won't back up, and we can have more water flow by gravity. We do have a stormwater pump. In addition to the drainage that we've done on Center Street, more than doubling the capacity of the drainage system going out to the ditch, this should help us mitigate any flooding in the Center Street area, as we know, that's been a historic problem. These drains and this project, that's where they kind of work together, should definitely improve that. So that's a project the town will be doing themselves, hopefully, and we've got a lot of projects on tap this spring, but.
Dave, will that fence on Foss Field be back in time for the summer programs?
Yes, yeah, all the fences will be taken down, and I'll be talking to Christine about the replacing it, upgrading it, because we have some money with this, and if the town does it, I think what I'd like to do is upgrade. The fence has been tucked down, put back a couple of times, it's kind of, so maybe have the green fence that matches the tennis court, so it'll look a little nicer. We might move it into the field a little bit to give us better access. For 15 years from now, we're gonna have to do it again. This is a maintenance ditching that every 10 to 15 years has to get done. So we might pull in the fence a little bit, the outfield for the little league, the right field is kind of, it's a big field for the minor-league players, so we'll be taking in five or 10 feet, shouldn't be a problem. By the tennis courts and paddleball courts, we've got enough room in there, and then by the soccer field, we might pull that fence in again a few feet to help. In addition to this, we might create a few square feet of wetlands to mitigate where we want to put the Foss Field pavilion.
Okay.
That's another issue, you know, the wetlands people want us to push the structure where it doesn't belong.
Yep.
And we got this little wetland, about 1,500 square feet, that we really want to fill, and the wetlands people are saying, well, if we can mitigate it, we have a better chance to get the approval, and we could do that along this ditch, create a little wetland area. So hopefully, that will all work. The Center Street reconstruction project, obviously, this one went overbid, we come back, we're hoping for a positive vote on the town vote in March. We are going out to bid, we just got approval, so we'll be advertising next week, the bid opening will be in March, and the intent is to award the contract as soon as possible, and start work in the spring, but then limit construction during the summer period from the end of June to the beginning of September, in which we'll not allow them to have any detours or stopping traffic along the, they can do some work on the edges, and we'll coordinate that with the businesses, and also try to get out to the newspapers and all the public about when that will start.
How about the drainage ditch? There's one that comes down Center Street and then goes in by TD Bank. Will that be done in the summer, or can that wait until after the summer?
The piping from the Center Street that goes down the alleyway, we have the easement with Mrs. Zimmerman, we will have to get that done. The sequence of construction, we leave that up to the contractor, he has means and methods. So once he bids it, whether the low bidder is, we'll talk to them about their scheduling. That's kind of work that could be done in the summer, or it could be done off-peak because of, again, the businesses, it's gonna affect the businesses. So I think talking to Mrs. Zimmerman and some of the businesses, we like to work with the contractor, and more than likely, that'll be a fall work, we won't get into that into the fall, we'll try to do as much as possible, we can outside of that, but I can't commit on that.
Okay.
Another one is the sewer collection upgrades, the money left over for that is for doing sewer II along with this project, so this money is for specific sewer repairs that have to be done on Center Street, and that'll be there. The Libby repairs, this is one that I am waiting on our report from our architect, Chris Williams, and I did meet with the architect, and he did tell me the fix, and I know you guys are meeting tomorrow night, I think? So I apologize, I wish I would have had that report, but the fix, we have this moisture problem getting into the building, and condensating on the walls, and concern long-term impacts on the building. So the solution, after studying it for more than a couple of seasons, is to seal off the bottom of the floor, that the moisture does come up through the basement, the basement is not, it's a, just earth. And there's vents in the front of the building, that the building was designed to kind of vent naturally through the basement and up through the back wall. The problem, though, in the wintertime, that cold air gets in there, and it's raising havoc. So the idea is to seal the, underneath the floor with plastic, all the seams would be sealed, seal those vents, and then to provide a ventilation system, possibly fans, or possibly some type of blowers, to circulate the air during the off-season. So it'd be some power, you know, we have power there, but it wouldn't be heating, it's just a matter of circulating the air to keep a more stable temperature throughout the whole building, and insulating the walls to stop the transfer of the cold in the inside. So it's a little bit above my head, it's a mechanical engineer, but that report is coming, hopefully with diagrams, I kind of have a sketch here, but I was gonna write it up myself, I really should have the experts do it, so again, apologize to the friends I know, as soon as we get that report, we'll get it to you.
Okay.
And our hope is that we will do that this spring. So I am pushing Chris Williams, they're great people, but they're a little slow, and our hope is that that will get wrapped up this spring. The effluent disposal study is, I think, going quite well, our pilot studies and everything we've done, we've met, like I said, in our presentation at town meeting, everything is going quite well. Unfortunately, we do need some more money to do this next phase, and Pilot 4 really is actually potentially part of the long-term solution. We have met with the state just this week, New Hampshire Wetlands Bureau, and we will be getting another wetland permit for this pilot, and it's looking quite promising. Our hope is that this permit will come, and the work will start late spring, early summer, in which we will prove that we can use that site for potentially all of our needs, and provide us with the 25 to 50-year solution that we originally intended, and hopefully within the money that we have still here from the proceeds from the lawsuit. Also with that is the project we will do down at the dockside, we, this is tied right to our I and I problem, and because it's so significant, we did a temporary repair, which has helped us, caused last year with the dry year, but it was the lowest flows we've had in records that we've been keeping probably 20, 30 years. So that's good news, these have been having an impact. This one project has to get done, because the state is planning on doing an overlay, and we'd like to get that done before them, so we're gonna try to beat the summer, try to get in there in the springtime, and we're working with contractors, we have under, they're working on Fort Worthland, the lineman construction, and our hope is that we can bang that out very quickly in the summer. And that will also be designed to work with our future plans at the parking lot. The asset management plan, again, we are working with Woodward and Curran on this, but we're also working with Underwood Engineers, another grants we have received, and we are making progress. At some point, I would like to hold the workshops, in which we could kind of do a show, and show you what's going on. It's very complicated, we have a lot of assets. And it sounds easy to just inventory, and then to try to determine its condition, and then determine its, do you repair it, do you replace it, how much money? When we look at everything that's over $1,000 in our facilities, there's a lot of equipment. And the more we get into this, the more I see this is really gonna pay off. It's been taking 10 years, we've been working on this, but I think, hopefully before I retire here, you will have a long-term plan, which will support our capital reserve accounts, and will be in a position, again, the state is now pushing many communities, because this is good business, they want to make sure that towns are planning. And part of this also, we're gonna be reaching out to associations that have private sewer and water systems. We're gonna identify those and tell them, hey, you own this, you need to stop planning, because your pipes do not last forever, you know, some 50 years, some 20 years, but you gotta be considering that. So we're like Robin Acres now, they've come to me and they said, geez, what do it take for us to be a town grow? I said, well, this is the process, you have to bring it up to town standards. And they have some deficiencies there, so I've been talking to them about it. So they're a pretty well-organized association, there are other ones that aren't so organized, and we have allowed our water system to grow into certain areas, into sewer systems, which sometimes developer develops a property, he sells it off and goes away, and the communities don't realize, wait a second, you have a couple hundred feet of pipe pumps, and you need to maintain those. So part of our asset management plan is to make sure we're in good shape, but we're also gonna try to help those different associations make sure they're planning for the future. Witton Nick Road, that project is successful, but we're still gonna come back in the springtime and do our overlay there, and also to overlay up to the intersection with Route 28. The railroad building, that obviously has been purchased, and that project now is just pending, hopefully, a positive vote. I think we have a lot of excitement about the associate, the nonprofit that's been formed with John Sims, and the Clicky Clark Model Railroad Museum going in, and again, that looks like it's gonna be a really exciting project. Along with that, and along with the town roads, the next one, we will be looking at doing a layout, and so that'll proceed this year with preliminary, we'll have some discussions, I hope that's gonna do that. I do want to talk to the owners and the condominium, a lot of them are away now for the winter, we want to make sure we bring them in, because they're tied right into that section, and we want to, and then we'll also talk to the architect about the building, so hopefully we get a positive vote, and we get that all settled where the building will end up, talk to the butters and stakeholders, it will come with a. a layout and hopefully a nice project there. The town road upgrades for 2016, as you can see, we spent the majority of the money. We have a little bit of encumbrance and a balance. That is all for Fort Wedlin to finish that piece. And then this year, we're asking for more money, which will then finish the rest of Fort Wedlin and all of Winter Haven. So that project is already been bid and we have the numbers. So again, as soon as we get our vote, we can move forward with that. The one other thing we've just done, we've just contracted to the bridge maintenance program. So that's finally gonna get moving on. And as soon as the snow melts, we're gonna start with inspections. So it's only, it's also we've come to asset management plan, because once we do that, we'll also determine its useful life. We are very luckily, former Public Works Director, Bobby Billford, did a nice job of getting into the bridge program. And most of our bridges are in good shape. The only one that's not is...
Lethem Valley.
And next one on the list is the Cushing Valley Road Bridge, yes. So that is one of the bridges, while it's still safe, it does have serious problems. It's red listed. And the preliminary engineering report is in with DOT now. We're waiting for them to okay it so we can go to final design. Our hope is that we can finish that up in 2017 and then have our long-term solution and see if someone else is not ready, we might be able to move up quicker. But that, that is again, one of those projects where I think we're ahead of the game on that one. There is a typo on that one, too. I, oh, no, no, that's right, that's right. I'm sorry. Dollar wise, the engineering, the big engineering is coming. That's why we haven't issued a PO yet. That's why there's so much of a balance there. Mass Lanning Park Lot, we have a bid opening tomorrow, so we're keeping our fingers crossed. That's been designed. We've been working with the stakeholders there. So hopefully the prices will come in and we've got a warrant article on that one. So hopefully the people will come out and support that. Very important project. Again, we're trying to space things out. So we did put off one parking lot project so we could do one per year. And I think while we try to sometimes go too much, I think it was a good decision. And hopefully this will be a successful, and our plan, again, if the vote is positive in March, the bids are good. We'll start this as early as we can in the springtime and hopefully be ready for use early summer. The solid waste building design is under contract with the Virgin Run Technical Services. And the intent is to have those plans and get them all priced up. So we'll have a good number going into the CIP process in later this year. And in the treatment plant capital reserve account, this is just wrapping up the engineering. And it's just, really, I should show the full amount of money, because now we have over three hundred fifty thousand, because we've built up over the last three years. The money coming in in 2017, we plan on doing some significant upgrades that will start, I've got proposals now, and we'll start construction on those right now, actually, because we have some contractors that are ready to go. We have some issues we can take care of inside the building. And then we'll be moving in and replacing sludge pumps and doing some concrete restoration work.
Dave, you jumped over the sidewalk upgrades, and I think that's something the public might like to hear.
Oh, my God. Okay, I'm sorry. Yep.
Yeah. And I think that's, a lot of people walk on some of those sidewalks and would like to hear where we are on those.
No, that's a good one. I'm sorry. I sometimes go too fast here. So this was from the high school going south out to Middleton Road. We started doing repairs and what we're trying to do is the worst sections, put in some drainage, because the way the sidewalk had failed, it was due to subsurface conditions. So we're going in and putting in under drains and repaving. Our hope is, again, that our crews will get in there in the springtime before things get too busy and get the rest of those pieces done and overlay a good section of that section from the high school out to Middleton Road. Did I miss anything else? I thought, the last one was the capital reserve account, which we talked about. The capital outlay projects that are still on here, the BNP's for Lake Wentworth, we did receive our bids. We got a nice bid for the Auto Care site. So that project will be awarded to Ambrose, and they'll start work on that this spring. Our intent is to get that done and seeded for the growing season so that they'll have a nice establishment. And that's, we appreciate our partners with that, Auto Care working with us, providing the easement, especially the Lake Wentworth Association. And Jack and O'Connell and the group there, they've been very helpful. The town has two small projects, which we intend on also doing in the springtime, kind of shoulder work that we've talked about, and that's gonna go forward. The asset management, this is again, this is in addition to the project above. This is just the ongoing. Like we said, we did not ask for additional money in 2017 because we had the grant and because we were a little behind, but not that it's important. It's very important. It's just, it's just taking time because it's rather complicated.
I don't see on there the Abenaki Ski Building Lodge, that you were gonna see if there would be enough money in here to do that, too?
Yes.
It's just not written down here. It has a town hall. I just don't want that one to slip off.
That's correct. We're trying, they're trying to get the template for the buildings and most of the, unfortunately, these guys are more utility engineers, water, wastewater. But for the buildings we're having, we're struggling a little bit with what's the best format to use. And I'm a little frustrated with them because they were supposed to deliver the dockside building, because we're working on that. Town Hall, which we think would be easy because it's relatively new, but it's a rather complicated building. And then we will get to the lodge, because that should be relatively easy. So that's, those are our goals for 2017, with the money that we have appropriate that's been carried over. I have tried to take off some projects that we have completed, but I think we're in pretty good shape. If you have any other questions, I would like to bring another thing, which wasn't on the agenda, but I, just as you know, working with the Chamber of Commerce and the snowmobile club, that we had committed to trying to provide extension of the snowmobile corridor from the end of the Bridge Falls pathway to Cape Park. And obviously, I've been quite concerned about the ice, as everyone's heard, that we've had some unfortunate tragedies this year. But this morning, I wanted to, I'm very nervous about this. As a public works director, as a professional engineer, I think our safety is number one. And I'm really nervous about this for a lot of reasons. But this morning, I met with Tom Willard and from the snowmobile club and Tom Wozniak. And they assured me that, just because I don't snowmobile and I don't spend much time on the ice, and as a little kid, I fell through the ice and it's not a pleasant, so when he asked me, he said, oh, yeah, the ice is safe. Let's walk out. I said, no, I'll take your word for it. Unfortunately, we've had a situation, this, sometimes you can have the right conditions, and last year was terrible. This year's a little better. But we got nervous, the ice was freezing and there's no snow cover and the ice was growing. And it started to put pressure on our docks. We started seeing things bend. Unfortunately, Mr. Bowers had some serious damage to his dock because he had no bubble on. So we had to turn the bubbles back on to open that up again. Once the snow came on the ice, we felt, we turned them off about ten days ago. So that ice now is not as thick as the ice that's out in the bay or underneath the dock. So it's, to me, it's not safe. It's three inches, maybe. The fishing game says it should be eight to ten inches of black ice is which is safe. Now, that being said, I was gonna be here to say that I would, I really want to put the burden on the selectmen for me to go forward with this. But when I talked to both Toms, they assured me that the way that it works, the snowmobile club does not encourage anyone to go onto the ice. No one encourages anyone to go onto the ice. It's available if you want to go on the ice. So what we're going to do, and I want to make sure you understand it, we're only encouraging people to come into Cape Park and park their sleds there to enjoy the businesses in downtown Wolfboro. If they so choose to go onto the ice, it'll be at their risk and we'll have a sign up there. Because again, I don't think, I feel comfortable recommending that we're asking people to go in. So when we move all the snow, we're gonna put a big snow mound out there. So absolutely no vehicles will be able to go out that way. And only snow machines that are experienced and understand the risk they're taking will be able to go out there. Tom is gonna go out there and run it back and forth and make the path. And he says that it's kind of scary. You put a hole in the ice and the water comes up and it freezes and refreezes and it gets, you know, he says it'll be safe, but it's not for us to say that. So it's, and I want the selectmen to understand this. We will build this path Thursday night into Friday morning. That's the intent, in which we will lay out the snow as, and I brought this again, I know you're aware of it, but I just wanted to bring it in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I remember.
So that will be a significant, and I think, difference for Wolfboro. But if you were in Berlin or a lot of these other communities, it's no big deal, they tell me. They travel snow machines all the time. We will be laying out the snow path along the parking places on Central Avenue. And the snowmobile club will come with a grader. I mean, their groomer, and they'll groom it and they'll put the signs up, stop signs and cones. There'll be no parking signs along that, so we don't want anyone parking on that side. Hopefully, we'll have enough signs so people understand that and that will allow two-way traffic for snowmobiles on Central Ave. They'll come off of the Bridge Falls pathway, kind of go over towards the condominiums and ride that curb, go in front of the new real estate building and by the post office. There'll be stop signs at each intersection. And there'll, there'll be no snow on the main roads. They can go straight across that. We lose all the parking coming out of Dockside. And as we go left to Cape Park, the path will go right there between the van stand and one of our parking signs. So that's where the path will be. So we'll lose some parking spaces along that. And then we'll move the snowbank out. And like I say, we'll put a block there so there'll be no one can drive their cars onto the ice. And if the snowmobiles who think it's safe can access the lake. But with that, I would like a motion or approval from the board to go forward with this, that they still are in support of this, in support of the chambers. Or if you have any questions or comments, I know, actually, Luke knows more about this than I do.
Yeah, I don't think we supported it. Somebody proposed it and we allowed it. You know, I don't think Board of Selectmen is endorsing its safety, its desirability, or anything else, you know, in my opinion.
Well, I want, again, I feel strongly here that I'm a little nervous that this is gonna be, they're gonna have a lot of positive and potentially negative reactions to this. And I just want the board making sure you're the ones that approved the concept. I'm the one that's gonna deliver it. Under these conditions I just stated, that we're not recommending anyone go onto the ice, even though we talked about that a lot before. And I just want to make sure that's clear.
I think that the initial idea was that we could go out onto the ice, but I don't think we have the ice that is safe this year. So I think I have no problem with the plan you have, not letting cars allow experienced people, if they want to go at their own risk. I have no problem with that. The board did vote and approve this pilot for one year. And that is for us to get the feedback from the community on whether they feel that this is a good idea or not. And it's, so it's a pilot. And I'm comfortable going forward with it. It's back to trying to get more people into the downtown, to get more activities in the downtown. Fisherville is not going off until March 4th. So we're hoping, again, to get the lake frozen. They are going to put the alcohol on land. We're not going out on to the ice with that either. And if it isn't real, where they've started to talk about putting the ice houses on off of Brewster Beach, the Bob Houses. So we've already made some kind of adjustments.
I would like to warn people also about Brewster Beach. I'm learning a little bit about that. But at Brewster Beach, as the ice does get heavy and squishes down, water does come up. So there's water up there. And I saw, I couldn't believe that people were going out there. I thought it was open water, but there's water, there's ice underneath. A lot of things always happen. Then if new snow comes, so caution. Again, same thing, we provide lake access through Brewster Beach. We are not recommending anyone drive their vehicles out on that ice. And everyone, it's, hey, live free or die, but please don't die. Just be careful.
I'm just saying, we're not going, we weren't planning to take those Bob Houses out exactly where you were saying, on our ramp. If they're going out, they're gonna go out off of Brewster Beach. That's what, all I was saying. I'm not telling them to go out or not to go out. There are a bunch of Bob Houses out there, and you can see that water come up.
Well, when you're out on the ice, they tell me that it's more than ten inches when you're out in the bay. But there's certain areas around bubblets, and if there's currents, and again, so we've got to be very careful. We don't want anyone congregating out by the docks. So they have to be out at least, you know, hundreds of feet because the dock, because we opened up the ice and let it refreeze, it's not the same thickness. We also have the Smith River, which discharges. Right now, it's cut down, but if we have a melt, we have to let the water go because we can't have the water rise in Lake Wentworth. So we've got to be cautious of all these things. So again, anyone who is going on the ice, just be very cautious. Make sure you understand what you, the risks you're taking. Again, we want to encourage safe recreation. And that's, I just want to make sure that we're all, we're all supportive of it. And we will make it happen as a pilot this year. Unless you say no, because if you say no, I'd be happy to cancel.
I guess Dave's looking for, Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, I also had some conversation with Tom Willan and the club, and they'll be glad to help out all they can. But they're not recommending anybody go out on the ice at all.
Okay.
This is you had said.
Okay. But we're on the same page. That's what I think.
I don't have any issue with what's gonna happen, and I don't think they have any issue with helping out with grooming and stuff either, so.
Very cooperative. They're willing to do, as they're gonna meet us at three o'clock in the morning on Friday morning to make sure, because we'll be removing snow, hopefully. We're, again, tonight's storm, we're not sure. The guys have been working a lot of overtime lately and they need to get some rest. But hopefully, we'll be doing that Friday morning. Don't be surprised, there'll be a change.
It looked like it's coming in yet, the storm. I don't see any snow out there.
No, that's okay. We're okay. If it decides not to come tonight, we're okay with it.
It's coming later.
So I'll just take that as we're firmly, we'll go forward with the revision vote. Great. Thanks so much. Appreciate it. Unless you have anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Have a good night.
Okay. Next on our agenda is a discussion for our monthly budget expenditures and revenues report. Pete?
Good evening, Pete Chamberlain, Finance Director. I hope you've had a chance to read my report. Can't get too exciting the first month of the year, so I just want to go on at length about it. I would point out that I did do my quarterly allocations with the exception of property and liability insurance in January this year, which I had not done. Normally, I'll only do those in March. So it's a little elevated. And then when you add in the debt service payments that are paid in January, that bumps them up a little bit. That's why you see the ten and twenty percent numbers, and it's mostly all debt service and other allocations. Revenues seem to be reasonably in line for the first month of the year, so knock on wood.
Yep. Anybody have any questions or comments for Pete on this?
About nine months, we'll probably have some more questions.
Yeah, we'll have some fun. I would say if it keeps snowing like this, we'll probably start getting nervous around April. I know I will.
Just stop our road maintenance budget.
Yeah, well, oh, he's gone. I could promise anything at this point.
Okay. Next on the agenda is our 2017 Voters Guide.
I had, just to note, I had, Linda had been talking to me about, talking to Mark Puffer about double checking the comments that were on Article 28, the Community Crime Control. And Mark had sent me back the rewording that you'll see. It's with the yellow markup on it, which is what Mark and finally recommended to be put in the voter guide.
You have that, Tom? The new, do you have this? The new one?
Yeah, we've changed that. I thought he did a very nice job of adding wording, and that really was what he said at the deliberative session. And that's why I had questioned whether he would like to add more. And I'm pleased with what he said. I think it gives the voter a better understanding of why it is not, it's not a good idea to pass this warrant article.
I agree. I think he did an excellent job expanding on that, this narrative here. I guess I would enter, do we need a motion for this?
The other thing I would say about, I think Dave Owen did an excellent job of putting this voter guide together. I had proofed it, and there are very few things that I had to patch in terms of typos. And I was very pleased with it.
I'll move that we accept Mark Puffer's petitioned Article Community Crime Control revision as submitted to the Board of Selectmen.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So you have that amended version for Article 28 now, Tom, right?
Yeah. I know I have to send it off to her tomorrow, as the plan, so. I thought I had heard, I thought that I had heard the date, the second, myself, but it being, it being the... it being, it being the... Yeah, not being familiar with the publishing schedules.
I would think that the one in, closer in March would be closer to 10 days because I don't know about anything, anybody else, but it, until it's coming up, some people don't pay attention to.
Okay. Takes care of that. Do we have any, uh, old business to discuss?
I do have, um, one piece of old business on this thing of wanting to promote our Park and Rec Department. I found this down at the entrance to coming into the town hall, but on Saturday, this is, uh, our winter carnival in Wolfboro. Um, and this is put on, most of these events are put on by Park and Rec. Uh, Saturday, the 25th, from 9:00 to 11:00, Abenaki Winter Triathlon. And then from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, a progressive cross-country ski dinner. On Monday, the 27th, knocker ball, something new, from 2:10 to 4:10. And you make up teams. Um, then there's a movie on March 1st. On March 2nd, um, from 9:30 to 8:00 PM is, uh, the American Legion Skating Party. Friday, March 3rd, from 5:00 to 8:30 PM is ski and snowboard races. And then on March 4th, uh, is Fisherville will be going on and the annual pancake breakfast, um, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM. And that will be at the Lodge. That's a, a town favorite. From 11:30 to 2:00 PM, Learn to Curl. That's at Pop Whalen. And then there are just a whole lot of other events, um, on that day. There's a 50-50 raffle. Ski Works and the Nordic Skier will be there, uh, giving demonstrations. Uh, that's from 12:00 to 4:00. Most of these events are starting at 12:00. Uh, face painting, crock pot, dish and bake goods, uh, from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM to benefit the Abenaki Ski Team. From 12:00 to 8:00 PM, popcorn and cotton candy. Uh, same 12:00 to 4:00 inflatable obstacle course. 12:00 to 4:00 horse drawn sleigh rides. Um, at 1:00 to 2:00 PM, Mini Minute Challenge. I don't know what that is. And then from 5:00 on is the Little Air, Big Air Competition. From 5:00 to 9:00 is the Bonfire. Um, at 8:00 is a Snow Steak Torch Parade. And at 8:30, there's fireworks. So, um, I'm sure you can find this on the town website. If you want a hard copy, they're in the lobby of the town hall. And I think that's a great list of activities for our winter carnival.
Thank you. Any other old business? Any other business?
If it, at this point, if I could ask, um, Mary DeVries to come up, uh, there, the chamber is going to do candidates night and I thought she could fill the board in and the public on, on that, if that's okay with the board?
Sure. Absolutely.
Thank you to the board and Linda for this opportunity. So this is the Wolfboro Area Chamber of Commerce's 15th year that, when we've, uh, presented the candidates forum. And we encourage, uh, the community and voters to attend and be in the audience, prepare a question for the candidates. And, um, if you're, you're not obligated to ask a question at the forum, you can be in the audience and hear from others and our moderator. Um, and, which is again, Randy Walker is volunteering to moderate the candidates forum from Walker and Varney. The candidates forum will be held in the meeting room at the Wolfboro Public Library at 5:30 on Wednesday, February 22nd. And we invite anyone who is, uh, has filed for a seat, uh, with the Governor Wentworth School Board, with the town of Wolfboro, and also, uh, new this year is, uh, are those running for the state representative seat to attend and participate and answer questions. We have made sure that anyone running in a contested seat has received a, um, personal invitation. So in all fairness to everyone. And those contested seats are the, uh, one seat for a member at large for the school board. There are three people filed for that position. And also for the police commission, there are two people who have filed for one seat. And there is the one opening, uh, for the state representative. And there are three people who filed with the state for that position. So we, uh, look forward to those who are able, those candidates who are able to attend, to be there and participate and answer questions. And, you know, we've heard from people in the past who have been in the audience that, wow, to be face to face with the candidates and really hear their voices has made a, a big difference. And, and it can help no matter who's elected too, because you can, you remember, look back and remember the conversations at the forum. So please be there if you can be. And thank you, Linda, for that.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess we're ready for Town Managers Report.
I have nothing.
I have nothing. Oh, it's going to be a quick night tonight.
Yes.
I'll go to committee reports. We'll start down here with Luke.
I haven't had a since, uh, my last, the last meetings. Nothing to report.
Dave?
Hi. This is the Heritage Committee, Committee Meeting. And their, um, main thrust is to try to promote the railroad station. Vote to pass. And they're, uh, exploring other ideas such as, uh, uh, having a program of barns in Wolfboro, farm, barns on farms and things. They can have special, uh, tax credit for the barn only, not the land under it, uh, to preserve it historically.
And the only meeting I've had is the planning board. We had a meeting last night. There was a public hearing for, uh, Lone Wolf Brewery is relocating his brewing operation, part of it, trying to. He's still going to have his retail space downtown where he is now, but he wants to relocate the, uh, the actual manufacturer of the beer. And that's, uh, that was continued on for more information to come into us.
Where is he moving it to?
Out onto Haynes Hill Road. Yep. And on that, that's the only meeting I had. We got, kind of snowed out in our community TV meeting this week and decided to postpone it till next month because we, nobody could get together for another Tuesday. So...
Yeah. I went to the chamber board meeting, uh, last week and before this meeting, I went to the chamber social. And all of us were at the deliberative session.
That's right, too.
I had, uh, one other meeting, other of the ones we usually go to. Uh, zoning board of adjustment last week.
Okay. Questions from the press? Right. Yep. Any, uh, public input?
Allison Police Department.
That's good. So, we have nothing else here? I'd probably entertain a motion to go into non-public.
So moved.
Motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, yes?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
We can start.